If we could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, then I'll ask Councilmember Thompson to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Shall we pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll points?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
We have a quorum. We have a full house. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of June 26 in your pocket, if you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Make motion, adopt, present it.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. And if there are no additions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Also, each of you should have received a copy of our latest check register in your pocket, if you could indicate you received that register. Thank you. To the portion of the meeting now that is dedicated to public comments, and a rare occurrence for our meetings, is we have no one that's signed up for public comment, but would still be willing to hear from any member of the public if they would like to use this period. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Mayor's comments, and you'll never be disappointed, I'll always have Mayor's comments.
Bring it on, Mayor.
Bring on the Mayor's comments. Well, one of the first things that we get to do this evening, and it's something that has been long overdue, and this council, I'm very proud of the fact this council instructed us to draft a resolution honoring one of our local companies. A local company that's been a mainstay in this community, and whose owners and employees have reached out to the city and helped during our toughest times and circumstances. Of course, we're talking about Hamilton Hinkle and the Hamilton family. For those of you that have been around city government, you know that occasionally when we have a blizzard, and it would otherwise cripple our community. Before Richard, it was Frank, now it's Richard, the company would send down huge equipment, equipment that's as big as some of our downtown buildings, dump trucks, and literally when we cannot push snow any further, they load it up and take it to the quarry and dump it away from downtown. When we've needed special jobs done quickly, like when the council made a commitment to repave the basketball courts at Ed Davis Park, right in the middle of a busy paving season, these folks stopped what they were doing, did that job for Ed Davis Park at cost, and then paid half of the cost for us. Recently finished a great job of paving the parking lot over at Ed Davis Park as well. So, Richard, councils ask us to prepare a resolution honoring your company. We can't do a resolution strong enough to convey our feelings about your father and your leadership. Of course, I think all the council knows that Richard's had a very painful transition with the loss of his father, and then with Richard tonight is the gentleman that I call Mr. Answer. Seriously, when I have a problem, I call Mark Reed. And when we don't know how to do a paving project, when we didn't know how to proceed out back, I called Mark Reed. I couldn't afford what the engineers drew, so I called Mark and said, "Come, help me." And the result is what we have out back today. So this company has given, and given, and given. I hope that one day, each of you will get a chance to take a tour down through the deep rock mine, if you've, if you ever get the chance, it is very impressive what's, what is underground out there. So if you're ready with the resolution, Richard, you and Mark want to come forward? We have to adequately embarrass you here.
Resolution of the City of Georgetown related to appreciation of the service of Hamilton Hinkle Paving Company. Whereas Hamilton Hinkle Paving Company has made generous donations, volunteered countless hours and worked to further many city initiatives, and whereas the Georgetown City Council has expressed a desire to publicly and genuinely thank Hamilton Hinkle Paving Company for this service, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Georgetown that the Georgetown City Council on behalf of the City of Georgetown, its employees, its residents, and all other parties otherwise reliant upon the workings of our city, acknowledge and by this resolution formally enters upon the permanent record appreciation to Hamilton Hinkle Paving Company for its service to the community. The council furthermore looks forward to the future of this relationship. This resolution was approved by the vote of the City Council, City of Georgetown, on the 10th day of July 2017.
Thank you.
Richard, we, we could struggle with the motion, I'm not sure about that.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of all eight council members, not just myself, but as all of us make a motion that we represent.
I'll second for all of them.
And if you want to second for all of us, then we'll solve that little.
There you go.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Richard, now that this has passed, we'll pretty it up, put a gold seal on it. You need one, you need one more thing for your office wall.
Thank you, Richard. Aye.
Let's see, also under Mayor's comments, we just finished the 4th of July, and what a remarkable weekend we had. So proud of all the community activities. We, we got the parade in, it was just a little bit wet, but we got the parade in. I had several veterans stop me later that afternoon at other events and tell me that they thought that this 4th of July parade may have been the most patriotic they had ever seen, because every float was still in the parade, people were drenched, there was a great crowd downtown, and it indicated that people were willing to come despite the inclement weather. So, chief, thanks to our police department for all the many things that were done, to our Public Works Department, you get in trouble when you start thanking, but Lori Saunders was a blur of activity all weekend long. Amelia Cloud and Jan Atlee at the Arts and Cultural Center did a great job with the activities right after the parade. I'm pleased to say that at the pie contest...
Did you win?
Well, it was a competition between the Police Department and the Fire Department. And what I can tell you is first place was an incredible peach pie made by the Fire Department, and in second place was an apple pie made by the Police Department, and a cherry pie also made by the Police Department was in third. So, Fire got first, Police in second, got second and third. So, it was a good day, we got the fireworks off and...
Yeah, I'd like to compliment Bill Parker, he does a lot of work trying to get these funds raised for this firework. I think, I think he's about $1,500 having it all paid for, it's kind of a hint, so, you know.
And what's amazing with, with Bill's help, and the Quonix Club that's working on it, they raised all the money for this year's, and they've got most of the money for next year's, so that they can always fundraise a year in advance.
That's what he's saying, about 15 short for next year, so they're always thinking ahead, and that's the nightclub, that's the Quonix Club's nightclub, not today's club.
Wanted everybody to know that there were several council questions, and there have been a number of emails to the council concerning the fill on Parrish Pike that's been added. Joe Kane did respond to that, at one point there was a shorter email chain that included Joe Kane, and Chuck had asked a question, and he was involved in that email chain. Joe gave, I thought, a very thorough response. The fill that's been used on Parrish Pike was a result of a division of water permit, they also had a planning and zoning permit that was approved by the engineer who has since left. Our new engineer, Ben Krebs, has assigned a professional engineer to stay on site. They're restaking the corners so that we can reassure ourselves that they haven't put any more fill than the division of water approved, and that's being monitored by an engineer. So, at this point, I am convinced that all the proper permits are in place, the right regulations have been followed, and we are actively monitoring the situation now to see if they are in full compliance. They still have a final development plan to do, I think the owners intend for a restaurant to be on there, so it still has to go back in front of planning and zoning, but we do think at this point that everything is exactly where it's supposed to be. The property owner that's contacted the council has continued to send a flurry of emails, but I think we've answered the questions to the extent that we can. Also wanted everybody to know that our health insurance change has worked mostly smoothly. Anytime you do it this quickly, there's a few rough edges. This week, we're having to help a few employees make sure that their, the balances that they had accumulated toward their deductible are being recognized by the new insurance carrier. And there was an issue on some prescription coverage, that we've gotten involved, or Megan has gotten involved and helped those employees with those things. So where we've had little issues come up, we're trying to help the employee, but we think it's gone pretty smooth. All of you all should have received your cards in the mail.
Yes.
Let's see, also, it almost doesn't bear mentioning now, but we had a little bit of a scare today with a, an employee on, one of our Public Works employees was outside of the truck helping a driver back in, and he was watching the truck and not watching the car behind him, and he got pinched just a little bit. Thankfully, it wasn't a severe injury.
Good.
It turned out just to be a pinch mark on his back. Robert did take him to the emergency room, physicians did do a CT scan so that we know we didn't have internal injuries, and that employee is resting at home without serious injury.
Good, well, not good, but good.
Yeah, it's, at least we dodged that bullet today.
There you go.
Yeah.
Item, and that completes Mayor's comments for right now. Let's see, item seven on your agenda is something we've been preparing for for a little while, and Kyle has been working on a presentation for us about streetlights, so we're finally ready to show you tonight an inventory of lights, where we've recently added lights, and where we are going to seek some engineering, electrical engineering help to finish this picture.
Mayor, we, we were discussing, it's hard for them to see, we might need to throw another TV.
Well, we were asked to put another one over here, and we are pricing that.
What about right there?
Pardon?
What about right in that corner?
Either one?
No, this corner right here.
Oh.
The small one?
If you put it over there, because I had some audience say they can't see, so, someone from the audience had suggested putting it over there.
I mean, not to interrupt you, but it would be nice for...
Now that we're into the new budget fight, what we can do.
That's right.
We can't do this.
Geez, thank you there.
Look at your money.
Clicker.
Come on down, fellas.
Trying to just tighten up a little bit.
Come on. You got it, Chuck.
Yeah, but that don't help them none either.
Yeah, go ahead. Come on, Chuck, Mark.
The good news is, for our viewers at home, they should be seeing this image on their TVs.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Adam's got a better visual than you do.
Mayor, council, good evening. I know this has been going on for a while, but thanks to Mark for helping start a list. I believe Connie and Nick Liddell, Officer Liddell, were helping on that, and whoever else added to this list. We started with the list that was given to us and kind of expanded on it a little bit. I'll tell you what these colors mean in a second, but basically what we did was we took the entire list and broke it down into what utility, whether it's KU, Owen, or...
Bluegrass.
Bluegrass, thank you. Determine whether it was just a maintenance issue, or whether or not we're adding a new light, and then whether or not it's on a state, state road. So the green, well, we have, we have stars up here which represent just the lights at an intersection, and then the actual line, colored lines that you see are for the full length of that street. The green represents completed maintenance requests, so those were all streetlights that had to have bulbs replaced or fixtures replaced. Those should be all complete by now, if they're not, they're, they're still in the works. The blue are the new lights covered under the MO in front of you all tonight. Don't have the exact number in front of me, but I think it's about $11,000 in install costs, and about $430 in...
Per month, yeah.
Tariff increase.
21 lights.
The orange are, we're just waiting on more information from the utility, I didn't get it in time to add to this MO. The red are the lights that are on state roads that will require us to hire a pre-qualified electrical engineer by the state, who will develop plans, go through the permitting process with the state, and at that point, we'd be able to look at construction costs. Right now, we have about $10,000 in the budget for that engineer, I do not know if that will cover it, but once we send out an RFQ and get one under contract, we'll, we'll deal with that issue as we get to it. And then the, the two yellow stars are downtown, those are lights owned by the city that Public Works actually has in inventory right now, and we're waiting for them to be installed. This is the spreadsheet, those are the lists, you can't read it, but if you...
It's pretty and colorful.
If you'd like a copy, just let me know, and I'll get you.
Get you a copy, sorry.
Yeah, email please.
Email, okay, I will do that. So, but this is the list we're looking at.
Kyle, the, some of the areas that the council has expressed most concern about are the long, dark quarters that primarily exist along state roads. And I think some of the greatest indigestion council has indicated are the state roads.
Right.
So, what you're telling us is, in those areas, we have to hire a design engineer.
Electrical engineer.
Electrical engineer.
That's pre-qualified by the state.
They will prepare cost estimates?
Plans.
And construction documents?
Yes.
That we could then bring to the council to...
See if we can or can't.
Yeah, at what, at some point, this becomes, we want to put in the streetlights, but it becomes a financial consideration as well. Do we have to spend the money on the electrical engineer just to determine the cost?
Sounds like it. And it's going to be our cost, once they, we get permitted and stuff, or will the state pay for it, we will have ours.
So if this, if, what we've heard for two or three years is, we want streetlights in those areas, and that we're interested in providing those if the state won't. So it's, if we're going to become serious about that initiative, then, then we're going to have to hire a little bit of expertise. It looks like we've, we've done a bit of a better job in identifying lights that are out and getting them repaired, but we still are going to have those long, dark stretches until we cough up some money.
So do we need to like, you know, instruct Kyle to go ahead and at least put out the RFQ and then bring it back to council to see how much it's going to cost to hire the electrical engineer?
I think we need to, I definitely, if the next step is for us to hire an electrical engineer and really evaluate what we want to accomplish, I think it's time to do that. I apologize for these not being legible on the TV, we probably need to do a trial run on these before we, before we show them to you, and if this is going to be the outcome, we need to have paper, we need to have hard copies for you to evaluate in real time during the meeting. We will email you both this map and this list tomorrow, so you all can have it, but I think the, the big takeaway is we can begin the engineering on our longer, dark stretches, if that is our intention to move on.
Well, we've got this far, I mean, we don't have any other answers until we do, so...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
But we, the map is pretty helpful for vision. At night, you don't need help visualizing it, but the lines are helpful on a map to visualize graphically just what we're talking about.
It's a start.
Can we, I noticed, I walked it again today, down West Main Street toward, on 460, to where the sidewalk disappeared, but I noticed, you know, that they stagger them, like there's a light on Highland, then there's one across the street, and you come back, and then you go back, and what I noticed is there's several foliage tree problems that, now is that a city thing with a bucket truck that we could trim away, because that might help with some sufficient light, from the lights that are already there?
I'm, I believe it is a city, city thing.
Okay, I didn't know if it was state or...
KU does not perform those activities, the state probably should, or probably would, but the frequency at which they do that is, you know, right. So basically, it comes down to if we'd like to get it done, we should do it ourselves.
So we can do some trimming and then check some bulbs, and that may help part of my problem out on 460.
That will help significantly over there.
Okay, thank you.
We'd also like to use this as an opportunity to look at some new technologies that are available to us. There's energy service companies all over the place encouraging us to do energy efficiency moves and actually pay for those energy efficiencies through energy savings. I went to Louisville two weeks ago and visited with one of the leaders in the field, Harshaw Train, and in their presentation, they showed night drone shots of different parking lots and different streets in Kentucky cities where they've helped the city, and it's remarkable how much dark they got rid of, how you started picking up illumination from the next street light much earlier than, than you would have. So, KU may not be our only partner on this deal, because KU has solutions that are their package. We may want to explore packages that provide our citizens with more light at less cost.
He used to work for the Department of Energy in Lexington, and maybe there's some help through the Department of Energy with some grants or some streetlights or some new, like you said, new technology that could help us.
Yeah, I was, some of their demonstration shots are remarkable, the amount of illumination that's provided at less cost. So if you get more and you pay less...
It's a good deal.
Over time, that's a pretty good deal.
And you do realize that when you light it up like that, it's a lot safer for our citizens.
Yeah, that's...
That's a safety issue that we can really help out a lot, because, you know, you get in some of these dark sections and walking, you know, it's a little scary at times that section.
Well, these people confirm for me something that we've all known for a long time, that originally, streetlights were designed for, to promote vehicular safety, but in more recent years, public opinion sees them more as personal safety. They like to be able to walk around the block and feel secure, and things of that nature. So, both are an element in, in the way we feel about our community.
Are you wanting to bring that group in then, Mayor, to help us, or is that just...
I, I want to bring them in, David, and challenge them a little bit, can you help us?
Yeah.
And how would you fit into what we're trying to accomplish with these two RECCs and KU, and can they give us some advice that would help us do better?
Yeah, and maybe if nothing else, we just do a specific area, maybe we find a zone that is in need, and you try them out and see what results are, or pilot program.
So I was, I was very impressed with, with their technology and the commitment they've made to these technologies, and the number of Kentucky cities, they showed me footage from about three who had made real differences in their community. So, at this point, we have a municipal order, are you ready for that, Kyle?
Yes, sir.
An order approving the installation of 21 streetlights and the tariff associated therewith, and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents. Whereas the installation of streetlights on numerous city streets is necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Georgetown, and whereas the city has developed a list of streets and intersections at which it intends to place these 21 lights, and whereas the installation cost will be approximately $13,000, and the monthly tariff will be approximately $424.65. And whereas this project is provided for in the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, and now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the installation of 21 streetlights at a cost of approximately $13,000, along with a monthly tariff of approximately $424.65, is hereby approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Kyle, thank you for moving forward with this. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe your group could come and make a brief presentation to us, kind of tell us about what they do, show us some samples, very brief.
I think it would be worth a few minutes of council time to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
Sounds good.
I'll work on that as well.
Good, Mayor.
Item eight on your agenda is a municipal order approving the purchase of an administrative vehicle for the Fire Department. Come up, Chief Ford, I think this is one we took away from you last year, wasn't it?
It was, it was. Yeah, this is in our current 1718 budget, but it's with Bob Hook, the dealer that's state contract price.
Mayor, can I make a motion for your approval?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chief. We moved right on with that, didn't we?
Ready to go.
Let's see, also, in the area of a purchase, item nine, we have a municipal order approving the purchase of a backhoe. We looked at three different brands, all three of which on the state bid price, is that right, Robert? I didn't know you were back from the ballgame yet.
I made it.
You made it.
Sorry for the dress, but got it here.
You got it here, that's all that matters. And MO is what, 90...
93.
93, 450.
$93,450, and we had budgeted.
95.
95.
We got, we got prices before we did the budget, and they all was around 95, so felt pretty comfortable with that, then when we pulled them out, came in low.
Was that a motion, Mr. Tackett?
There's a motion over there.
Motion, second.
She didn't run it down, Mayor, you're running behind here.
I am running behind here, that's the story of my life. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think we might be trying to beat a, beat a record? Beat a record.
We ain't going to beat no record, Mike.
Can I say something about Robert?
Yes, sir.
The other day, I was coming to work, and I drove by the trash truck, and they were throwing stuff in the back, and Robert's there, turns around, he's throwing stuff in the trash truck, on the street, and I think, I gotta respect that, that he's out there with the guy. I think, I gotta respect that, that he's out there with the guys on the street working.
Thank you, Robert.
We, we catch Robert doing this stuff sometimes, but, but we, we had, we had a difficult week this week because we were off Monday.
Yeah.
And we had double trash to pick up on Tuesday.
Work Monday, off Tuesday.
Work Monday, off Tuesday. So we had double garbage on Wednesday, and we had a rather large project planned for Thursday morning that we got rained out on.
Yeah.
We still have plans too.
Robert couldn't spare a man, so Robert climbed on the back of the truck.
Well, he did that once before, didn't you, Robert? All day long.
Got some good sun.
But we do appreciate you.
Thank you, chief. Next on your agenda, and Connie, we were moving through this agenda at a world speed record pace, but we got a couple of big issues at the end that I think will slow us down just a little bit.
It's okay, Mayor, it's okay.
Item 10 on your agenda, 10A is second reading of the Garbage Ordinance Amendment. Sponsors, Ms. Conway and Mr. Thompson. We have, we've had the chance to, to beat this horse to death two or three times. We, we've talked a lot about it, but we are prepared tonight to have second reading, and I know several council members have feelings on the ordinance and would be glad to open the floor to comments. Or if we truly want to follow Robert's rules of orders, do we have a motion for approval of the second reading? Should we get it introduced first?
Ready?
So moved?
I sure do.
Ms. Conway?
Second.
Second. Now it's been introduced, we can talk about it.
Trace, you got to read it?
My summary.
Ready?
Yeah.
An ordinance amending various provisions of the Chapter 19, Article 2 of Georgetown Code of Ordinances regarding solid waste collection and disposal. Summary, amend Section 19-16 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to include waste from portable toilets in the definition of hazardous waste. Amend Section 19-20 to revise the rates for residential garbage collection to require payment of an additional $5 per month for additional Herbie Kirby for residents who request more than one Herbie. The existing $15 standard residential rate for a single Herbie is not being changed. Provides a maximum of three Herbies per dwelling unit and requires a minimum of 12 months' use for additional Herbies. Allows customers who purchased an additional Herbie within the 12 months preceding the effective date of the ordinance to request a pro-rata refund of the price. Amends the rate structure for commercial Herbie collection to eliminate the classification-based system and replace it with a rate matrix based on the number of collection times per week and number of Herbies collected. Limits the number of commercial Herbies to five per business. Allows the Director of Public Works to limit the number of commercial Herbies per parcel or to require business or property owner to seek private dumpster collection when necessary. Eliminates the requirement that customers over age 65 must use a single 65-gallon Herbie in order to obtain the $8 reduced residential Herbie rate. States that reduced residential rate customers will incur a $5 per month increase for each additional Herbie requested. Amend Section 19 through 21 to allow customers with a medical condition making compliance impractical to request a waiver from their requirements that Herbies be kept behind the front facade of a residence and/or that limits the times during which customers may place Herbies at the curb. Provides that unless specified in citation, violations of the nuisance provisions of the solid waste codes must be remedied within 24 hours of notice. Repels the enforcement provision contained in Section 19-24. Amend Section 19-25 to make violations of the article subject to enforcement through the Georgetown Code Enforcement Board of Ordinances and subject to the standard penalty schedule provides for repeal of incipient ordinances, severability of provisions, and an effective date of September the 1st upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky. Introduced and publicly read for the first time June 26, 2017. Public read second time July 10, 2017.
Thank you. There has been a motion and a second for approval, and would be happy to entertain any comments from the council.
Well, I have a comment. Does that surprise anybody?
No, sir. It's okay.
Consultant report was very clear in that the residential rate of $15 had been subsidizing the commercial dumpsters and commercial Herbies to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. We removed the dumpster loss and are aiming to fix the commercial Herbie price structure to be more reflective of the actual usage, but we haven't compensated the residences that have been subsidizing commercial. Instead, we are voting tonight to raise their rates. As a group, when you raise part of it, you have raised that group's rates. And when we declare all trash must be in a Herbie, then many more will have the need for additional Herbies, thus raising the group's rates even more. We are raising rates on the group who has been subsidizing the others, even after we will have fixed the injustice, we should be talking about a reduction to that group. I'm not advocating a reduction, I'm advocating we keep the residential rates the same and provide a better level of service, the service that our citizens need. A little history that you all know very well, when the council a few years ago attempted a mandate all trash be in a Herbie or it wouldn't be picked up, the town revolted. So they implemented a second Herbie for sale at cost to keep trash off the ground. That was the motivation, so they would keep the trash off the ground. So our automated trucks could be more efficiently, could more efficiently collect the trash. At the same time, they rescinded the order of not picking up trash on the ground, hoping the additional Herbie would motivate people to use them instead of sending it out. We're going to still pick up ground and the trash for free and charge those with additional Herbies more. Some say it's not fair for those that have two Herbies to pay the same as those with one. Is it fair that those that don't pay for additional Herbies not pay for what they put on the ground? What are we saying to this? Well, we have to address that later down the road. We are creating an ordinance that creates an inequity and leaves the necessity to fix the problem it makes, more trash on the ground at a later date. Our citizens deserve a complete solution, this is not it.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Mayor, you know, I said what I said at the last meeting, I guess, and nothing for me has really changed that much. I think I have, the biggest concern I have is, is increasing the, the rate on the residential customer that's got two units to, to $5. And in my mind, it's just my opinion, I feel like that when we do incorporate recycling, and I assume that there's going to be a charge at that time, that maybe that would be the time to impose the $5 for an extra Herbie, because they would have the option to go to recycling and maybe reduce their, their waste. And to me, that, that approach seems pretty reasonable. I mean, all in all, everything else is, is pretty good. I've just, I've kind, I've kind of got that concern, and I've obviously shared that with you, and I'm not trying to talk anybody else into anything or out of anything. I don't care how anybody else votes on this. But, but the other thing I want to say, because I said it last time, is that we're so much better off today than we were 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, or 20 years ago, as it relates to, to garbage pickup and, and how the community looks because of the improvements. Not only does the community look better, but the service is, is probably better, the efficiency of it, the safety of our employees is so much better. There are just so many benefits. So I, I don't want to be negative about all this, I really want it to be positive, but that's just kind of where I'm coming at this.
Thank you.
Well, even talking about the $5, excuse me, if this is okay if I talk, but even talking about the $5 for the additional Kirby, Herbie, it's not anything unusual that down the road when we do start recycling, because I feel like that that's the route we're trying to get. And if we implement this now, that down the road, if people decide that they want to do the recycling, they can trade out for their Herbie, and they're already, we've already got the data in place of being able to, to bill. And then if anybody else wants to do recycling that didn't get the extra Kirby, might be able to size down or whatever. So, you know, it's not perfect, no plan ever is, but it's not anything that you can't go back and, you know, re-tweak or whatever. So I commend you all for working as hard as you have on it.
We've put a lot of time in on this, we've had a lot of conference calls, we've had a lot of, you know, a lot of good help from our consultants. And, you know, you can't give it the second can away. It costs us $5, or it costs us $60 per can, which is $5 times 12 for the first year. And it's a safety thing, too, for the employees, because, you know, you don't need them following, and it's, it's an economic thing, too, because when the second truck has to go, if you've got the one-armed truck, or the, the deal where you're picking it up with the machine versus an employee, it's, what's on the ground gets heavy. And it's also a, a situation where you don't need to send that second truck in there. That's more gas, that's more manpower, that's more cost.
Takes more time.
Takes more time, you know? And we did discuss, you know, some heavier pickups certain times of the year, you know, around Christmas, it's always bigger, and that would be free. And we're going to try to work out three or four different times during the year where people can set out more things without any type of penalties or having the need for that second can. But it looks so much better if you generate that much, but I guarantee you, I want to say when we go to curbside recycling, not if...
Right.
That everybody's garbage will go down more than 50% because of what they choose to put in the recycle bin.
That was a big thing when I lived in Lexington, half, I mean, we had the recycling there, obviously, and my recycling thing was always full, but my garbage was half. And like, most of the time, I, I put my garbage out every other week, you know, and just that's kind of how it balanced out. But that's the biggest thing I hear from people, is really about the recycling. And I've had people tell me over and over that they would be happy to, you know, pay extra for it, so. And that just might be the people I'm talking to, but, you know, that's just something that I hear constantly from people, whether I'm in line at Kroger's or...
Or taking your stuff to the recycling.
Taking my stuff to the recycling center, anywhere. So, so, I mean, no plan is perfect at all, you know, and there's always going to be pros and cons. And it's just a tough issue all the way around.
I look at it as being progress.
Yes, and the seniors will be able to not change the size of their can.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a big help for the seniors.
Still get the discount, still have the large can.
That's a big, big help for a, you know...
Connie, you made a good comment that if we do get to recycling, or when we get to recycling in a year or two, that extra $5 to pay for that can, you can just alternate that recycling can out for.
Yeah.
That's a good comment. And, and anytime, anytime you, you adjust a ordinance and you're, to me, I don't see it, Chuck, and I don't, and I'm not disagreeing completely, but if you've got so much garbage you can't get it in one can, you need another can. I've got two cans, and I don't have a problem paying that extra $5. It's a safety issue, it makes the city look a lot better, and overall, I think the trucks, and I think the routes would run a little quicker if we're not running the people behind another truck to pick up extra garbage. Fuel, gas, maintenance on the truck.
It's just economical.
Are these boys picking up this garbage? And there's all kinds of stuff in those garbage, we have needles and everything else. It's a safety issue as much as it is anything.
Marvin, to respond to what you said, what we're doing is we're creating a motivation to not have the second can by charging for it. So we're going to have more, and we're still picking up the trash on the ground. So when I'm talking about we need a complete solution, we need to think it all the way through. If we're going to charge for extra cans, then we also need to require that we don't pick up trash on the road.
Well...
We're not doing that. So we're going to have to come back and tackle this again in the future. My point was, this isn't complete.
Well, you've got to start somewhere.
Yes.
Thank you.
You got to start somewhere.
Right.
Okay, but what we're doing is we're creating a motivation to go backwards. You're going to have more people putting stuff on the street instead of paying for the extra can. So we're, we're leaving a gap there. And this, and we're not even addressing the fact that the residents have been subsidizing the commercial stuff for years. We got rid of that over, that cost, that, that, that waste, and we're not, we're not rewarding the residences for that. So we have extra money now, and we're going to raise the rates.
This, this is not a rate increase. We've had this discussion in previous meetings. I disagree, this is not a rate increase. I'm not going to have another debate between council members tonight. I've given everybody a chance to say their piece, and I'm going to call for a vote. I will remind the council that we started this effort almost two years ago.
Yes.
And we started it by acknowledging that we've never well-understood solid waste. I didn't understand it while I was mayor. I watched council members when, meetings when I wasn't mayor, and councils always struggled with which trucks do we buy, which methods do we use. We finally decided as a body, we were going to get all of the information that we could. We hired a national-level consultant, we spent months and months getting that information. We reviewed those reports, we've worked with the committee to distill this noun into the first couple of steps that put us on the right path. And I just, I think it's time to vote on this ordinance. We have talked it to death, it is time to vote on the ordinance.
I would like to ask one question.
Yes, sir, help yourself.
Marvin, you have two cans.
Yes.
You pay $15 now. Your two cans will cost you what in the future?
It's going to cost me $5 more on the month.
Did your rate go up?
It, it ran up because I, I got...
Did your rate go up from what you're paying?
My choice went up to, to five more dollars.
It went up from what you're paying today, it's going to go up.
But I don't consider it across the board rate, though.
That's the question I wanted to ask.
You know.
Make my point, I'm done.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If everybody's finished.
I just would like to say one more thing, as a percentage of people that put the extra garbage on the ground, there's still going to be that percentage of people that's always going to do that, because that's just the next human nature. So that will have to be addressed later, I'm sure, because people are habitual. Just saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Oh.
Mr. Showalter?
No.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
No.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I thought I might get my first chance tonight to break a tie during this administration.
First time in two, you, what?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years?
Too many people have worked too hard for us to move this issue forward. Next item on the agenda, we do have planned a, an executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Would you like a motion?
Would you please?
I move to enter into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C to discuss matters of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I would, I would ask Ms. Ames, just please stay with us. Thank you. And, and the other, our guests will invite you back in in just a minute, all right?
Thank you.
We don't understand why.
I'm Adam Clark.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to come back in from executive session.
May my motions been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. That we resume regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. While in executive session, we discussed matters of potential litigation and took no action. And after that executive session, I'd like to say to our guest from Kentucky Utilities, we're delighted that you're here with us tonight, and we appreciate the investment of time that you all have made to acquire a civics lesson in Georgetown.
Thank you.
That's cute.
But I think we're gonna do just a little more homework before we have questions for you. So I apologize for having you over here all evening and then not asking you to speak, but we'd like to do a little more homework, and if you could perhaps join us at our next meeting, then we should have more substantive questions. Thank you all very much. Again, sorry that-
Sorry for the delay.
So much of your evening. Let's see, if I'm reading this agenda correctly, the only thing we have left are council comments. So let's see, I think I started down there last time. I'll start down here this time. Millie?
Thank you. I have a letter that I'd like to read.
Yeah.
It says, "Dear Mayor Prather and distinguished city council members, I am writing you this letter as it Georgetown residents concerned with the traffic and pedestrian flow at the West Main near Galvins and Water Street." She put Princey's Old Jail side intersection. "Cars parked on both sides of Main Street and Water Street are creating a traffic and a pedestrian congestion and safety hazard for both. On Friday, June 30th, at 5:45, I was traveling to my home on Highland Avenue via Water Street. I sat in traffic on Water Street for approximately five to 10 minutes waiting for a vehicle that was two vehicles in front of me to turn left onto Main, traffic entering..." Let's see, okay, wait a minute. "...cars parked along the street and pedestrians crossing to and from, from the bakery side to the Galvins side, made it impossible for the vehicle to turn. Eventually, made a right-hand turn onto West Main, allowing the remaining vehicles to also make a right turn and keep traffic moving. Also with vehicles parked on both sides of Water Street near the intersection, the task was of turning from Main onto Water, into the Old Jail was almost impossible. As a citizen, I would like to see a form of traffic pedestrian control at this intersection other than a stop sign." So if it's a right turn only, I think she's trying to ask for, from Water Street, instead of up Main toward the funeral home, instead of trying to turn left, back onto Main because of the parking and all the traffic and congestion. So her name is Penny Lowe. So she asked me to bring that up.
We may refer Ms. Lowe's request to the traffic committee.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Typically, on things that restrict turns in or out, we let the traffic committee.
Well, thank you for letting me read that. I'll give it to you.
Anything else, Millie?
That's all. Thanks.
Should I give mine to the traffic committee too?
Well-
What's yours?
Let's hear it.
I'm sorry.
Growing up Highland, as you get ready to get to North Mohegan, and you're right, we've got a couple cars that's parked out on the side of the street, and every time you come over that curve and you're meeting cars, you can't get by.
Right there, that apartment complex?
They don't have enough room in the apartment complex. I don't know whether we can put a no parking sign on it. I don't know. But I've had two residents complain about it, called it's dangerous right in there.
There's never been problems with that parking there before. They must have-
Well, they got two cars. They're out on the street probably halfway or better on their car. You know, on the grass, but they're still out on the street.
And this is facing which street, Marvin?
It's going up Highland till you get past-
It's the dead end of No- Mohegan. Well, Mama Cullen used to live there.
Oh, oh, Mohegan. Where you turn on Mohegan.
North Mohegan on your right is right there on the right side where you get to it. And it's a little dangerous coming up in there. I've had two residents stopping at me about it, so I just brought it to you.
I bet half Georgetown doesn't know North Mohegan's even over there.
Well, it's opposite of Sound.
That's right. It's a little chit-off.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The other one's just Mohegan.
Marvin's on fire now.
Playing on Mohegan on the-
One more time, David.
Anything else, Marvin?
No, sir. They wanted me to bring it to council, and I did exactly what residents asked me to do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had a resident ask about the Anderson property that's developing right now, that in behind Harmony Ridge, there again, we're going back to field, but they have done some field elevation, a field, and it's like halfway, where his house sits, it's like halfway up his first story on the back.
Just on the back side.
So he said something about, which I do not remember, that there were supposed to be walking trails and things like that, and he's concerned about the, it's gonna sit so much higher than his property is, what they're doing right now.
Probably with water.
It's a big mound, but it's a, he sent me a couple pictures, but they've flat-toed off the top of the mound, so...
Afraid they're not trying to stay there.
Mm-hmm. So I told him I would bring it to, the council bring it to you, and that you could look at it and find out from planning and zoning what's going on with it.
Okay.
It's right behind Harmony, the road to Harmony Ridge.
And that's still called Anderson.
Community farm.
Anderson community. Okay. Anything else?
That's it? No, sir.
I have a question. At what point can we get involved in planning and zoning issues? I don't think there is any, but-
Particular planning and zoning?
I mean, Karen had this issue just brought up, and this Kenneth Tracy has been bombarding me with emails, phone calls about the North Elphorn bill. And some of the stuff he's given me leads me to believe that there really isn't a problem. I don't know what he's looking at, because I'm not a specialist in that. Is there anything that we do about that, or is this just something that's just totally planning and zoning out of our hands?
When it comes to stuff that's in, either in floodplain, that is solely the responsibility of the floodplain coordinator. When it comes to development and land disturbance, that is also within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. I mean, we've essentially assigned them that role by virtue of subdivision regs, and to some extent, they have that role by virtue of statute. So, I mean, I think in general, the answer to your question is, our only involvement is to ask, is to ask questions. What's going on? What's the, can you give us info? That's essentially what we've done on that particular issue. I did meet with Ben Krebs today to talk about it. He gave me the background. And I think he's as frustrated as we all are, but it appears that the state has basically made the final decision on that particular issue.
Basically in the state's hands.
They've essentially overridden everything with their... I mean, we theoretically have the ability to make a local decision, but one other factor on that particular piece of property is it has been zoned B2 for almost 30 years. So it's hard to argue that you can't develop it. We don't have an ordinance that prohibits development in a floodplain. Instead, what we do is, we don't zone floodplains for development. So that one is one of those long grandfathered issues. So, I mean, unfortunately, it just kinda is what it is.
I told him he needed to hire a lawyer, because I can't give him advice on that.
Right.
And he needs to find somebody else to give him advice. If they're changing the water flow to where water's running on his property, he might have a claim. But it's not having anything to do with the city council.
It does not.
No.
I mean, he's CC'd us on everything, but no, we don't have a role, essentially.
That's it.
Okay. Mark? We're good? Anything else to come for the council? We stand adjourned.